Monique, one more minute. All right, and then we shall get started. Got a hot softball game to get back to at Nancy Park. It's a doubleheader, so I'll meet the second game. This is true. This is true. It was, it was, it's actually very, very nice outside. I saw how many people were over at Market in the Green, too. Wow.
Yeah, it was busy.
Yeah, it's really, it's a, it's a perfect night to be outside, so I'm excited for that, so. All right, well, I'm gonna call it, guys. Well, it is 6:31, and I'm officially going to call this meeting to order. Good evening, and welcome to the Charter Township of Meridian Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. Today is Wednesday, July 19th, 2023. It is 6:31 PM, and we are going to take a look at the agenda here, which begins with approval of tonight's agenda. Hopefully, everybody got a chance to look at that, and if there's any questions or comments, otherwise I move to approve tonight's agenda.
Do we need a roll call first?
Oh, I'm, thank you. We will do a roll call of the members in attendance to begin the meeting before the approval of the agenda. Vice Chair Koenig.
Present.
And Member DeShane.
Present.
And Member Bennett.
Present.
And Chair Mansour is present. All right, moving on to number two in our agenda, which is approval of agenda. Again, I motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So, support?
Supported by Member DeShane. This is a vote to approve tonight's agenda. Member Koenig?
Yes.
Member DeShane?
Yes.
Member Bennett?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Number three on our agenda would be corrections, approval, and ratification of minutes for May 17th, 2023. Concerns, questions?
I move approval of the May 17th, 2023 ZBA meeting minutes.
Support.
All right, this is a motion to approve the minutes for May 17th, 2023. Member Koenig?
Yes.
Member DeShane?
Yes.
And Member Bennett?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, so those minutes have been approved. Number four on our agenda is communications, of which we don't have any of note, and number five is unfinished business, which we have none. So we will move directly into new business, which brings us to ZBA case number 23-05, 2055 Grand River, Michigan First Credit Union, 27,000 Evergreen Road, Lethard Village, 48076. Mr. Chapman, take it away.
Okay. So, the applicant is requesting a variance to install a 20.2 square foot wall sign on the north facade at 2055 Grand River Avenue. In 2011, there was a variance that was granted by the zoning board appeals that permitted three wall signs on this building. They're outlined in this chart here. So, they were granted to install two additional wall signs on the north building elevation that faces Grand River, which is considered the front facade. And there's one Meyer wall sign on the north elevation that's approximately 429 square feet in size. And the existing front, frontage on that facade is 522 lineal feet. So, the ordinance allows one wall sign on the front facade that is size equivalent to one square foot for each lineal foot of building frontage occupied. In this case, the Meyer store being 522 feet long allows one wall sign up to 522 square feet in size. The applicant is proposing to install one new wall sign, the Michigan First Credit Union, on the north elevation to the west of the main entrance store in approximately 20.2 square feet in size. So, the applicant's requesting to install one additional wall sign on the north elevation where there are three currently located. So, the variance is for one additional wall sign. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chapman. Would the applicant or the applicant's representative like to come up to the podium and speak on the case? And sir, if you'd like, just give us your name and address for the public record, please, so we know who we're talking to.
Hello, my name is Charles Aldery. I'm with Jiffy Signs, representing Michigan First Credit Union. Address of the building, or?
Address of your place of employment or home, something for the public record.
30777 Schoolcraft, Livonia, Michigan.
Thank you very much.
We're seeking this variance mainly to provide a safer environment for the pedestrians and motorists inside the parking lot, allowing them to identify the location of the business. Parking lots tend to be one of the most dangerous spots for pedestrians and motorists, from people being distracted, whether it's by phone, GPS, music, talking, let alone trying to find where they're going.
Okay, and is there anything you'd like to add to what Mr. Chapman said? Or does that pretty much cover it? It's just the one?
It's just the one sign. There is one modification. After we submitted this, we did a little deeper inspection on the site. It might actually end up being slightly below 20 square feet, because the chevrons on the left side won't fit.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you'd like to stay there, that would be helpful. That way, if we have any questions, we can ask. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this case tonight? If not, I will go ahead and close public comment and open for board time. All right, board members, any questions or comments? Yes, Member DeShane.
Just for clarification, you're going to be a credit union located within the Meyers?
Correct.
First or second story?
I'll be on the first story, kind of where you exit out from the checkout lanes, in the front of the store.
Which entrance, the east or the west entrance?
Um, I'm not 100% sure.
One year bottle return or the one year the pharmacy?
I'm not 100% sure on that.
Is a?
I can look it up from?
Perhaps we could reframe that? Is it close to where this sign is located?
I believe it is close to that side.
Be closer than to the pharmacy?
Okay.
Is what I understand.
Yeah, I believe that's correct. I think there used to be, like, the Huntington Bank in there.
Yeah.
Previously.
Okay. That's what, that would have been my next question. Member DeShane, go ahead.
Does everyone call Meyer's sub, that's the whole upper level? They used to have a hair salon up there and some other businesses up there. So, we could, if we approve this, we could conceivably have four or five other applicants who might also be asking us to put signs in front of the store. Is any possibility that Meyer would let you put a smaller sign underneath there, sign on the west side of the store?
I'd have to check with them on that. This was the location that they identified that they would like it. It goes with the, we've done this for, I want to say, three or four other locations with Myers and Michigan First, in that same location.
So, what we're looking at here, what does that sign there say?
The sign says Michigan First Credit Union.
I see. Would this light be illuminated, sign be illuminated?
Yes, it would.
Would it be, I mean, lit from behind, or is it just a light on the sign?
It'd be rear illumination.
So, would it be like a glass panel illuminated sign, or how would it be illuminated?
Other individual channel letters, except for the part that says Credit Union. That's a capsule that we're doing a push-through acrylic. This will be LED illuminated, and I believe we have 7,200K LEDs planned for it at the moment. Which would project brightness probably out to about 100 feet.
I'm, because this is the Meyer store, and they kind of own that whole block there, I think this kind of steps, in my mind, steps apart from a typical strip mall or other entity where you had several stores, where, like, across the street, we've got Mertz Meats, and we've got the Goodwill store, and we've got the framing shop, and that, that kind of sign limitation there kind of makes sense. You don't want it too crowded in there, because it's kind of eye, visual pollution, but this being the, this large superstore for Meyers, I'm more inclined to approve it, because it fits within the Meyer enterprise. Although, from a treasure point of view, Meyer and other big-box stores are, started by Menards, are really putting it to taxpayers in Michigan. They have appealed their, their big-box tax appeals. A Meyer store in Michigan pays half the property tax they pay in Ohio. Same with Menards, same with Home Depot. That's a whole nother discussion. They are not good tax citizens, is what I'll say. At the same time, this Meyer store is, you know, we all know how busy it is all the time.
Well, and jobs, too, I think.
Certainly a lot of jobs, yeah. So. And where this sign would go, there's nothing on that blue panel right now, is that correct?
I don't believe there is on that panel. There might be pharmacy up top there.
I see.
You can see, I don't know if you can see it. Oh, well, you should be able to see it on your monitor, Member DeShane, where Mr. Chapman is circling, where there's a pharmacy sign located. And I'm assuming, Mr. Chapman, that's part of their?
That was one of the three, that was.
One of the, one of the three.
And then the bottle return on the other end.
On the, on the other side of the building.
Yep.
I thought at first you were using Meyer as an example of saying, see, Meyer got these three extra signs, so now we want what Meyer got. No, you're actually saying, keep giving Meyer all these breaks with their, their signs and their, and their subtenant signs. Again, the fact it's on the blue area and not above the blue, it's not as difficult for me to approve this variance. Those are my first thoughts.
Thank you, Member DeShane. I would add to that and say that, looking at that facade and seeing the size of the sign, and even potentially it being more minimal than what you're saying, that, to me, right there, kind of meets my thoughts as far as minimum action is concerned. I do have the similar concerns that Member DeShane has about the other tenants in the Meyer, and that is something that I think we've been wrestling with a little bit as a board. What, where our sign ordinance kind of is restricted is where we're being asked to step in and say, okay, how much more stuff can we put on the side of this building? And in this case, since it, since Meyer is larger business, there's a business inside of the business that doesn't have that instant access. You have to walk into the store to gain access to the credit union. That's where I feel like a, a practical difficulty comes in for me, because there's no exterior of this business until you walk in. So unless you see that there is a Michigan Credit First, I mean, I, I think in the, in the packet was mentioned that, looking at a GPS, or if you're looking on the app and you're trying to find this location without the signage, you're looking and you're seeing, oh, there's a Meyer. I'm assuming, Mr. O'Leary, is there an ATM or another exterior portion? Because I know the Huntington Bank had an ATM there.
Everything is going to be internal, that I'm aware of.
Okay, so as of now, there's no exterior ATM or anything in the parking lot?
Correct.
Okay, so again, there's nothing else? Yeah, Mr. Chapman?
So, as far as I know, the Huntington Bank is going to remain, the ATM out there, as far as I know.
Okay. Interesting. Interesting from a perspective that signs, we need to be content neutral with signs, but I can see where that could also be a confusing, somebody seeing a Huntington ATM and looking for the credit union is going to be, what am I doing here? Yeah, I, I tend to, I tend to fall on the lines of this being a minimal action and being able to meet the practical difficulties and uniqueness of the scenario the more we talk about it, so. I am. That's where I'm standing. Anybody else have anything they want to add? Member Bennett?
I'd let Member Bennett speak before me.
Yeah, go for it.
I do agree, especially with what you said about parking lots being one of the most dangerous places. I think it's a really good idea to have something very clear. That way, you don't have people driving around, you know, rubbernecking, looking for, hey, where's this bank? Definitely helpful. And the fact that even the chevrons are going is just going to be clearing it up even more. I think it's pretty concise, clear, and it's minimal as to how much it's adding to the building, which I think is a good idea.
Just to be clear, they're not being removed, they're just being shrank down a hair to be about the same height as the lettering and the other castles.
Got you. Regardless, I still think, I still think it's a good idea, so. I agree.
All right, thank you, Member Bennett. Member Koenig?
I was, I was just going to say that I basically echo all the comments that you guys made. The one thing I did want to kind of add on, I appreciate Member DeShane's comment. I was questioning that as well, and you had agreed with that. I know that sounds like that's something we probably have to, if that time were to ever come, if another business were to come in there and want to put another sign, that's something we're going to have to worry about in the future. With this, the only thing I could see is even with the addition of the sign, they're still under that 522 linear feet. It's just the number of signs. So if another nail salon or massage place or whatever were to come in, it's going to be pretty close, that they're probably going to want to go over that 522, which opens up a whole different dynamic of now we're not just laying another sign, now we're going over that square footage that we're allowed per code. So not to, not to be, what's the term? I can't think of the term, but. Anyways, probably understand what I'm trying to get at.
Yes.
Not to be discriminatory toward that sort of thing, not to be discriminatory toward another business that wants to come in and say, hey, you want to go to 522? So absolutely no, that's not what I'm saying, but it's just another piece in the puzzle that this board would have to consider if another company comes in there. And I know, like, for instance, having a mile in Bath, there's a subway in there, but I don't think there's a subway sign outside. So, this type of thing, I think, is happening all over the place with these second businesses coming in and putting these signs up there. And I can kind of agree and understand and agree from the safety side, because multiple entrances of this, and this is just a, besides being a wacky shape, it is a pretty, the building is set back pretty far. When you get out of this building, it's like Chick-fil-A, and now it's going to be blocking even more, because once Chick-fil-A builds their covers, that this board will, you're going to really block even more of a view from Grand River, be able to see the Meyer building. So I think, I do agree with the other members that it probably would help as far as the safety and just the general wayfinding, to be able to see that and go, where in the building is this thing? Your bottle, actually, your bottle return, I actually wish that sign was a little bit bigger, because it's, you know, it's only 10 feet, and sometimes it's hard to see it until you get up there, unless you know what side it's on, but that's a whole nother time, so. No, I just, just wanted to say that I concur with most of the comments you guys made.
All right.
Michigan First has locations at Walmart as well. Do you know if they have an exterior sign there?
They?
That's actually funny that you mention that. Mr. Chapman, would you like to handle that question?
Yeah, so, I think it was 2017, I didn't have to look at the report. It's in the one for Walmart.
It's in the second case.
But they requested, like, a similar-sized sign, and it was denied back then, so.
Yeah.
Walmart, can't get a break around here. I mean, putting that Walmart store in was a, was a huge political fight. Is Michigan First for-profit or not-for-profit? Do we know? Most credit unions are not-for-profit, but this one looks like it might be for-profit.
I don't know.
It's really not relevant to this discussion. Just curious.
Well, when somebody finds out, let us know. Well, if none of our other board members have anything to add, I think I'm going to go ahead and try to tackle the criteria. And of course, while, while doing so, if something comes up, let me know. Criteria number one would be unique circumstances exist that are peculiar to land or structure that are not applicable to other land or structures in the same zoning district, and these unique circumstances are not self-created. Again, I can meet that one. I think that we've all discussed the fact that this being a business inside of the business is, puts it at a different rate than other businesses, as Member DeShane mentioned, like in a strip mall or something. The second criteria being strict interpretation and enforcement of the literal terms and provisions of this chapter would result in practical difficulties that would prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose. Again, I think, as we've discussed, I can meet that criteria. Criteria three, granting the variance is the minimum action necessary, which would carry out the spirit of the zoning ordinance, secure public safety, and provide substantial justice. I do agree that this is a minimum action, especially knowing, too, that it's going to be a little bit smaller even. That said, you know, I do think that it is a public safety concern for the parking lot. So that's kind of where I'm landing. I think everybody else on the board kind of felt the same. So that criteria can be met. Criteria number four would be granting the variance would not adversely affect adjacent land or the essential character in the vicinity of the property. And again, I can meet that criteria. I think it will only help the adjacent land and essential character, especially with having less challenges in that parking lot, being able to see that sign clearly. And criteria number five is granting the variance would be generally consistent with public interest and the purposes and intent of this chapter. And I can meet that criteria as well. So, any questions, comments, concerns on this criteria? Ask, good. All right, well done. Anybody here to make a motion? Anybody? Okay, fine, I'll make a motion. Motion to approve the variance for, my computer went off and I can't find the number, 23-05. Anybody that want to support it? Do you want any support? Support by Member Bennett? All right, way to get in there, I like it. All right, this is a, this is a vote to approve the variance for case number 23-05. Member Koenig?
Yes.
Member DeShane?
Yes.
Member Bennett?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so your variance has been approved.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming, sir. Have a great night.
You too.
All right, with that, we can move on. Sorry, I like to make that note, so I can put it up against the minutes, just in case. All right, with that, I'm just, I'm just testing them. I usually write it down, but now I'm trying to be fancy and technical.
I'll review them, but.
All right, in that case, we will move on to the second case in our agenda, which is ZBA case number 23-06, 5110 Times Square, Massa Multimedia Architecture, 3297 Route 66, Neptune, New Jersey, 07753. And, Mr. Chapman, go for it.
Okay, so the applicant is requesting to install additional wall signs on the west facade at 5110 Times Square Drive. In 2000, the ZBA granted a variance that permitted six wall signs. They're listed here on this chart. So, two of the signs described above, oh, sorry, signs one and two were installed on the building. The four main wall signs approved of the variance request were not installed and expired. And then, in 2014, the ZBA granted a variance to allow for four wall signs, which are summarized in this chart. And the zoning ordinance only allows for one wall sign on the building's front facade with a size equivalent to one square foot for each lineal foot of building frontage occupied. A Walmart is approximately 500 feet in length, allowing one wall sign up to 500 square feet in size. So, the applicant is proposing to install eight new wall signs on the building. Although there were four signs previously approved, the sizes did change on them. So, the applicant is requesting to install four additional wall signs on the west elevation, where there are four currently located. In 2018, variance was denied, like I said previously, for the installation of one new wall sign for Michigan First Credit Union on the west side of the south of the main entrance store at approximately 20.65 square feet in size. And that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Would the applicant or the applicant's representative like to come up and speak on this case? Hello, sir, just state your name and address for the public record, please.
Sure, it's Edward Danzer at 3297 Route 66, Neptune, New Jersey, Massa Multimedia Architects.
And what would you like to add to what Mr. Chapman?
Currently, Walmart is going through updating their elevations with painting and stuff, and we're also updating our wayfaring signs. So, we are re-changing the main ID sign, which is actually reducing in size. We're also going to like to change the auto care sign, auto center sign, to auto care, and the two tire signs that are existing on the south corner. All of them are actually reducing a little bit in square footage due to font changes, okay? What we're asking to add is additional wayfaring signs. There will be a pickup sign on the south elevation towards the north corner to pick up with an arrow, that is to direct the traffic and the customers to where the pickup parking is. That's kind of becoming a big portion of retail business now, is online pickup, where you place your order and you go and pick it up, and they bring it to your car. So that sign right there is to direct you to where the parking is. They're also like to add oil change over bay door number one, and numerals one, two, and three over the bay doors. Again, this is, like stated before, this is more wayfaring directional signage that we're looking to add, just to help the customers move around the parking lots.
Okay. Anything else that Mr. Chapman said that, that you feel the need to address?
Yeah, I think.
Okay. You would stay right where you are, in case we have any questions, that would be great. You said Mr. Danza?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, then I will go ahead and close public comment, as there's no one else in our lovely audience today, and go right into board time. Anybody want to get started? I will just start by saying, I feel like, and maybe this is a Mr. Chapman question. The four signs that are existing, they're changing, because it's, it's just a change in brand, but the sizes are changing, so that's why they need to?
They're 10 years old, they like to change them out every 10 years?
Yes, no, I know, I'm just, my question is more, those signs in particular are not the ones we're looking at?
Yeah, so, if the signs, unless they're getting bigger, then we're not worried about it, like, bigger and in a different location?
So?
So as long as they stay the same size, then that's okay.
Or smaller.
Or smaller, yes.
So, like, for instance, we are, we are actually just looking at, just, just want to be clear, what it is that we are, what we're talking about is the number, see, it says, it says that they're proposing to install eight new wall signs, but it says because their sizes have changed, but we're, we're not talking about those. We're talking about the request to install the four additional signs. That is what the variant, that's what the request is for.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, because the other ones are smaller in the same location.
So we are talking just about oil change, number one, number two, and number three?
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to be clear, because when, when I look at that, that chart together, it's like, oh, wait, are we talking about all of them, but one or not?
So the pickup one is?
Pickup one is?
Yeah.
So what is?
One of them's switching out from tire.
Okay, so we're losing one of the tires, and, okay.
No, I think we're, no, we have two tires. On the schedule.
There's a tire, tire and an oil change, right?
No, no, if you look at the schedule on the drawings, it has two tire signs.
So we're talking about?
Nine signs.
Nine signs, not eight signs.
Really?
Okay, so, we're adding five signs.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, that was my bad.
All right, I'm glad we're discussing this. Okay. I see auto care, I see the one, two, three, I see the oil change. Where's tire one and tire two?
They're over the two smaller doors?
Right here.
They're existing.
Oh, I see, okay, they're smaller, okay, I see.
They're not changing in size, right? They're getting?
They're actually reducing.
Yeah, so they're getting smaller.
Okay. Okay.
On that elevation, it would be the one, two, and three, and the oil change.
Are the signs that we're adding, and then the pickup on the other elevation? Okay. I tend to look at this and say, I understand it from a, from a sense of a directional, like Mr. Danza said, wayfinding scenario, but this is a, this is more than double what is existing on the building. So that's where I start getting into that minimal action, and is this minimal, is this all, are all of these things necessary? Are the numbers one, two, and three necessary? We have oil change over one, tire over one, and tire over two. Um, I'm an avid pickup shopper, and I've found the Walmart parking lot actually to be the easiest one to navigate, because it has those wonderful signs right in the parking lot, um, of where you pull up to. Um, much like Target, Target similarly, doesn't have a sign on the, on the building, the pickup area is pretty clearly designated. Um, so I'm, I, I guess what I'm, what I'm looking at is, is there a way to minimize a bit? Because, again, we get to, now we have nine signs, and we're content neutral, so those chi, signs potentially can change into different.
Is it the numbers over the bays too much?
For me, the numbers on the bay being removed gets rid of three signs, and we're only talking about additional two signs.
Cause if.
That, that to me is helpful. How does anybody else feel about the, the number, or any concerns or comments on those? Yeah, Member?
I was gonna ask that same question about the number ones, two, and three. If, to me, the, if you look at the auto care sign that's on the front of the building, kind of directing people around to the back, it's almost, I hate to say it, it's almost too small to be seen from kind of the road area and that. But I'm not, you know, I'm not asking you to increase that size, but. Yeah, I had the same question about the one, two, and three. If that can be, if that's necessary at all. If you have tire, tire there now, and if there, if you have business coming through there, people using it, I don't think they're gonna, you're not gonna lose any business if you don't have a number one, two, and three up there, is what I'm saying, because people are already using it now. You just need to differentiate between tire bays and, and oil change bays, I totally understand that, so I was agreeing with your, with the chair's question on that as well.
Can you, I mean, again, this is their new prototype look with their signage. Uh, if that's too much, I mean, you know, if that's what's gonna hold us back, then, you know, we can alter the signs to not have those if you need to get it through that way.
I do think um, the pickup sign on the front, again, is a, as a wayfaring sign, I can see the argument for um, even more so than probably all of the directional signs on the bays. But um, removing those numbers definitely helps us get from, then suddenly we're going from five to two, which I have a lot less challenge with meeting as far as the minimal action goes.
I would concur. This side of the store is the least viewed, viewed of the three stores, public sides, and the, obviously the backside no one sees, but um, so I find that that helps me to approve uh, the three new signs there. If the numbers can be removed, that is less of a change, and I agree with the chair that the wayfaring sign for the pickup, it would be allowable, and commerce is changing from 10 years ago, pickup is a real thing for every store these days.
Big time. Man, it's helpful.
Okay, so we have, I have no problem with removing those numbers if that's what I need to do to get it approved tonight.
Yeah. Anybody else um, questions or concerns regarding the sizes? I mean, I think this, the sizes to me, I have no concern with, especially since a lot of, we're coming down, like you said, in changing fonts and, and branding, you're coming down a bit in size. I, I don't have a problem with that, and we're sitting pretty well under what they're allotted for the, the frontage of the business is.
With the numbers, we're only going, increasing the signage over all the building, 30 square feet.
Right. Right, I, yeah, I fi, I find that to be um, helpful as far as what we're.
And they're roughly five square feet each, so we're just going over the, if, you know, we're gonna have to remove them, now we're all going, only going over 15 square feet.
Right. And that's still wildly under what the frontage is, yeah. Member Koenig.
I just want to say a redundant comment and agree with the rest of the board, that I do agree, I do like the pickup sign, because I moved here from Florida several years ago, and when COVID came, a lot of the places, they just were putting out like the signs in the parking lots, and nobody knew where in the world to go. So at least having something on the building saying, hey, you need to go to this side of the building versus this side, I, I like that feature, so I was agreeing with your, I know it's redundant comment, but I was just agreeing with you, because a lot of bigger stores out there.
I like to be agreed without the record.
Yeah, a lot of bigger stores, I mean, even if you look at like a, like the Buddy's Pizza that's right out here, they just have the kind of pickup signs, they don't, they have pickup on their door, but unless you drive up there, it's really hard to see, so I appreciate adding that, so that people can see that when they drive up.
Yeah, not to be redundant again, but pretty much agreed with everything, the one, two, and three seems a bit overkill, especially once you already have the oil change, tire, tire. But yeah, pickup seems really reasonable.
All right. Well, since everybody agrees with me, I'm just gonna go ahead and read the criteria. Let's go for it. Uh, and this would be for um, with, with the thought and the agreement um, of the board at large, that um, the one, two, and three is redundant, but with agreement that auto care and pickup are um, adding those is what we're, what we are um, looking to approve this criteria through that lens. That would be uh, first criteria, unique circumstances exist that are peculiar to the lander structure, that are not applicable to other lander structures in the same zoning district, and these unique circumstances are not self-created. Again, just like our friend over on Grand River Meyer, we are looking at a multifunctional building, so I do think that those, those are more unique circumstances. Um, generally speaking, um, to apply the criteria to and the ordinance to, um, it's just a different, just a different beast, so I can meet that criteria. Criteria number two would be strict interpretation and enforcement of the literal terms and provisions of this chapter would result in the practical difficulties that would prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose. Also can um, meet that criteria, I do understand, as we've spoken, uh, about the pickup area being a newer phenomenon that we're looking at, and understanding that that kind of wayfaring, we're wayfaring sign on the front of the building, um, you know, being designated to kind of point people in the proper direction, whether it stays pickup or not, will still be um, useful on a building this large. Also agree with the other wayfaring sign that we're referring to. And um, I think not knowing where those designated areas are could prevent, could cause practical difficulties for this particular business. So I can meet criteria number two. Criteria number three would be granting this variance as the minimum action necessary, which would carry out the spirit of the zoning ordinance, secure public safety, and provide substantial justice. I think um, reducing our number of signs from five to two absolutely met the minimum action for me. Again, as we've said, we've, we, we're still under the uh, square footage that is allowable based on the um, elevation of the store, and um, all of these signs coming in at slightly under what they, what they even used to be, is replacing the, the ones that are existing. I think we're meeting the minimum action quite nicely, so I can approve or, or meet that criteria. Criteria number four would be granting the variance will not adversely affect adjacent land or the essential character in the vicinity of the property, and I would agree with that, I can meet that criteria. Number five is granting the variance would be generally, generally consistent with public interest and the purposes and intent of this chapter, which again, I can meet that criteria. Any questions or comments about the criteria? All right. Well, in that case, anybody want to say?
I can make motion.
All right.
I move approval of ZBA case number 23-06, 510 Times Square, Massa Multimedia Architecture, 3290 Route 66, Neptune, New Jersey, 07753, uh, with the deletion of the number one, number two, and number three signs. Support.
All right. In that case, this is a, oh, rather, I should say, if you have any discussion on the motion that's presented, going down from the five to the two? All right. In that case, we will go ahead and take a vote. This would be a vote to approve the um, approve ZBA case number 23-06, um, with the removal of signs one, two, and three. Member Koenig.
Yes.
Member DeShane.
Yes.
Member Bennett.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so your variance has been approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Danza.
Have a good night.
You too, thank you. Enjoy the weather out there.
Thank you for being flexible. It's cold.
Yes. That's good to know, that almost never happens. Oh my gosh, well, yes, Michigan is bawling, embarrassing, right?
Thanks for being here tonight.
Yeah, we appreciate you, thank you. All right.
So I reached out to the applicant for the third case.
Yeah.
Haven't heard anything, so it's up to you guys.
Um, okay, well, I, does anybody, maybe before we get into new business, does anybody have any questions or concerns that may involve the applicant that we need to question in reading this case? I didn't really.
I can help, I mean, I know.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't have any, I have a couple of small questions, but I think you should be able to answer them quite nicely. Um, I, I don't know, I, I would feel bad not allowing them a chance to speak if they wanted to, Member Koenig, I guess.
Question there, Keith, have you heard from anybody like against this at all, or for this?
No.
Nothing? Yeah.
No.
I don't, I don't see an issue with us going forward, but I would, I'm, I'm not, worry is not the proper term, but I would just be wary of not allowing the applicant their due process, be able to comment.
Yeah.
Probably already know their comments.
Yeah.
Without them having the chance to put them on the record and kind of going, yeah, it wouldn't hurt to postpone it, but if we want, you know, based on your decision with Sheriff, we wanted to proceed with it, we probably could have.
Yeah. I, I suppose we can discuss it, and we can table it. We're here, so we can, we can take a look at it and, and table it if we, if we want for a vote. Um, and then that way, if we do have any concerns or questions, we can bring it up with them, hopefully they're able to, we've had the next meeting. Okay. Well then, let's go ahead and um, we will discuss case number, oh, it's going past the Walmart. Okay. Case number 23-07, Nob Hill Apartments LLC, 2502 Lake Lansing Road, Suite C, Lansing, Michigan, 48916. Mr. Chapman, what do you got?
Um, so the applicant is requesting a variance to allow for the construction of, of an apartment building located at 2300 Nob Hill Drive. Um, this 41 unit apartment building will replace the two buildings that were destroyed by fire in December of uh, 2022. Uh, staff worked with the applicant to come up with the most viable option, uh, that requires the least number of variances. Um, so basically, because the building was so old, um, our ordinance um, requirements were quite different back in 1970. Um, so section 86, 37644I requires that any multiple family building be 20 feet from the parking lot area, and at its closest point, this proposed building would be eight feet from the parking lot, which would be 12 feet into that 20-foot building setback, and I can show you where exactly that is. So it'd be right in this area, right here. But there are other areas that are within that 20 feet as well.
Keith, if they use this, it's like they've churned this building.
Yes.
Okay, if they use the old footprint, they would, would they still be, need a variance?
Um, so if they use the old footprint, they'd need a variance because the buildings would be too close together, they have to be 25 feet apart, and I think they were only, let me see if I have the other survey. Um, well, you can see here how close they are. So these are actually separate buildings.
But they're, they were touching.
But they had like, uh, there was like an overhang in between.
Right.
So they looked connected, but they weren't really.
But they were close enough.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, my question would be, are there, are any of the other buildings that close to the parking area, just in?
Um, it's hard to, can't really measure on here, but.
Right. No, I'm just, just, just curious, because I'm, I'm curious if that's newer, because that, like, where your cursor is, that building?
Yeah, I mean, that looks pretty close.
That looks pretty close, the one above it looks pretty close in that corner. I'm ju, I'm just curious, because, well, and then, I guess, are these overhangs to the, to the right? Kind of this direction?
Um, right here.
This is still Nob Hill, right? That's still?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Are those overhangs? Because that looks really close to that parking area as well.
Oh, right here, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is too.
So I guess my wonder is, because they're replacing what is lost and getting to a point where the only thing, to bring it up to modern code, to make it accessible, to get families back into this living space, we have one variance. Uh, and it's uh, based on closeness of parking area, and we can see other buildings within this complex that are already pretty close to the parking area. Um, my wonder is if that, if that is, it feels to me like a minimal action, a minimum action, I should say, but um, especially considering the implications of the rest of the build.
Right. The current infrastructure, which is, there's, we need variances all over the place that they're applying today. Is it me, or does this seem overparked to anyone else? Are they adding more parking than they would need, for one thing? It's 44.
Our parking numbers, I think, are up more than they were also.
Well, we're trying to return those back.
Yeah.
Um.
But I wonder, that's a, that's a key question.
They did expand their parking lot at one point, um, towards this wetland up here. Um, but I, I'm not sure on their exact number.
So this building is 44 units, how many were, were lost in the old, two buildings, I wonder?
Uh, I think it's pretty close to the same. Uh, let's see.
I didn't see that in the packet, but that's interesting question. It did, it did seem like in the packet that it was replacing bringing back the residents lost to the fire. That to me sounds like they are replacing what was lost.
Like for like.
Yeah.
Ironically, I wonder if, if having these cars too close to the parking lot is not in and of itself a fire hazard?
Well, that would be a question I would have as well. What was the implication of that, that building during the fire? Is it something that does need to be looked at? But that's an applicant question that, I guess, that would be.
It was not a car fire that started the fire.
No, we know that, but, but wondering what, what that damage was like, or what that might have added to or not, if it, maybe it wasn't a factor at all. But.
Oh, you're saying the surrounding cars?
Yeah, it, it being close to the bill, because, because looking at the first um, kind of that, that demo picture that you showed, looks like they were pretty, the parking was, well, it's, well, maybe not as close as some of the other buildings, but.
I think more of the concern is about what would happen if this were to catch fire again and burn another building.
Spread, spread next to it.
Yeah.
And what is the distance between those two buildings?
Uh, for the new one, or the?
The new one.
25 feet.
25 feet between the new building and one of the existing buildings.
Yeah.
And that's what's um?
Right here, yeah.
Okay. And that's within code?
Correct, yeah. That's why the building is angled the way it is.
So it can be as, as far as possible.
Yeah, this would be an applicant question, but if you scroll to the right just a little bit, um, I do wonder if they've looked at getting rid of like, you could clear the top portion if you just get rid of five parking spaces. Um, I do wonder if they've considered that or looked at that, and like you said, there might be too much parking, you know, more than they need. Um, obviously an applicant question, but it's something to consider and think about. Obviously an applicant question, but it's something to consider and think about.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I don't know for sure, but I'm thinking they gotta be, based on how our parking ordinance is, they gotta be close to, like, the minimum, so...
Well, and if staff worked with them on getting it to only one variance, they've gotta, they've gotta have met the parking, because otherwise that, that would have been a variance as well. Either minimal or, or maximizing, yeah, if they were below...
Does, does the township have a maximum parking, or just have a minimum parking?
Just a min, yeah.
So, that is the minimum.
The minimum was two per unit, yeah.
Two per unit, and that's pretty typical.
Yeah.
So, two per unit?
Updated, but typical.
Yeah, and they've met it, so, so they may not be able to get away with less parking without another variance, which, again, we're back to a minimum action, which... Yeah, I, I would feel, I would feel more comfortable waiting to vote on this case until we have the applicant in front of us. I think it's more fair to them, I think they have, they have the right to be able to answer these questions, and that would satisfy my, our, you know, need to really understand this fully before approving or not, or denying.
Agreed.
So, I would motion to table this.
Support.
And we will hopefully have them back in August, or when they're available. All right. This is a motion to table. Member Koenig?
Yes.
Member DeShane?
Yes.
Member Bennett?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so this case has been tabled. And with that, since we have no one in our audience, I will open and close public comment, and I will open board member comments and say, welcome, member Bennett.
Thank you.
We're excited to have you here, you jumped right in, I love that.
Tried to lay on the sidelines a little bit for my first time, but I love being involved, so thank you.
You did awesome, so we're glad to have you, and alternates are very needed, because we often have other things going on. So, welcome, we're glad you're here, and thank you for, for being here on such an exciting night. And any other board member comments?
I would, I would mimic, I apologize, I didn't say hi to you or come up and meet you beforehand, I was, I was actually reading back on some things, and I had some other questions, and...
Absolutely.
Just got sidetracked, and, but welcome, and thanks for showing up and participating with us.
Of course.
Which is, about yourself?
Well, I just graduated from MSU, Bachelor's degree in civil engineering. I heard about this, and I was like, well, that's a little applicable to my, my field, so I, I like being involved in local community as well, so I was like, sure, why not apply? And here I am. So, yeah, I, I live literally like five, 10 minutes away, so not much of a drive, it was perfect for me. Happy to be here.
Awesome. Well, we appreciate it, and glad to have another citizen lending a hand in our proceedings. And with that, I will close board member comment, and this meeting is officially adjourned. Thank you very much, folks.